There you just did.
Thank you.
There you are.
Thank you very much.
I didn't see you in the back, you snuck in.
Do we need to discuss at the workshop or whatever if we're gonna take action in the future on limiting sizes of going beyond what's required?
I mean, we can limit it right here, we can discuss. I don't know how many committees we have where we have a lot of choices as to how many people we add to it. This one, I mean, this body with six votes can add two, take away, and do whatever we want to, so.
Well, I like Nancy, I've known her since we were freshmen in Hiwasi. And she's definitely.
He put the age on you then, didn't he?
Uh-oh.
He let that cat out of the bag.
Uh-oh. We both graduated early then. You know, she definitely brings a lot to the table, but also like Gary, I mean, you know, I'll take, we keep Nancy, but you know.
Let's don't do no more.
You know, that's.
We're good.
And do we, is, well, I can't say that 'cause we got an even number on the, anyway. Anyhow, moving right along.
Moving right along. Thank you.
Okay, next up, I was asked by Jimmy and Zach Frye to put the Tennessee Highway Safety Grant on the agenda. Didn't go through the workshop, so I'll take my flogging and the. But the issue comes down, the grant came down late, and it's due at the end of March. It's worth $30,000, there's no matching fund, and Zach, tell us what you're gonna do with it.
Yeah, so it's a $30,000 grant through the Tennessee Highway Safety Office. We've had it for the last three years. Typically, we split the money in half, which is a requirement of the grant. Thirty or $15,000 goes for overtime for deputies, for traffic safety, saturation patrols, high-traffic areas. We use the other $15,000 for purchasing of equipment that addresses highway traffic safety. So in the past, we bought radars, speed signs, computers for our cars. Zach, once again, said $30,000 no match. Grant application came down, opened up the first, and closes on the 30th of this month.
That's a short win.
Motion to approve. Okay, we got a motion to approve by Commissioner Waller, seconded by Commissioner Whitfield.
I'm never hesitant about taking no-match.
No-match grants.
I never say no.
I don't even know we have to workshop that if somebody wants to give us money.
Okay, there's money involved, call the roll.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
Okay, go fill out the paperwork, get it done.
Thank you, Zach.
Thanks. Commissioner Shaver.
All right, I passed that before the meeting, and maybe several days ago, I sent you the right document, I don't know. Somebody said earlier, I sent it with notations, but I was looking at it, I thought, golly bum, I sent them the wrong one. But anyhow, this is why I discussed at the workshop, there's over 1,100 bills right now, I don't know how many of them will impact Loudoun County. I don't even know how you search through all of them. I've tried, I've just tried to pick my topic. But here's four that I know would have an immediate impact on Loudoun County. And I think I shared all of them, but the fourth one, the fourth one that has come up somewhere up in Kingsport, one, I shouldn't say Kingsport, one of the Upper East Tennessee cities is all upset 'cause they can't just go out and annex wherever they want to, said they were very unhappy that it has to be by permission, and if that's the case, we're never gonna be able to annex anything. So they wanna get the annexation law changed, so they can just go back to the old school of annexation. But when you read this bill, it's so vague, you don't know what it means. I don't know who it's targeted at, I don't know what it's for, so that's the only one that added to it. You all can read it, I don't wanna sit right here and read all of it, you can read what it says. And all I'm asking is that we vote to send this letter to McNally, Fritz, and Lowell Russell for them to consider opposition, or research, or whatever, but we'd like for them to oppose it, so that's what I'm asking for. And I'll put it in a motion, for a motion that we do send the letter.
I'll second that.
We got a motion, and Chase, did you second that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Raise your hand if you do.
Raise your right hand if you do.
Raise it high, bro, come on.
And I don't have a problem with H8116, which is the $2,500 that blew up in the village. Okay.
H1116, and he's talking about the letter?
No, no, that's $2,500.
Oh, the very last one.
The last, last one.
The last one's the annexation.
You gotta pay the league.
That's him's problem.
Is it all four in the letter?
All four is in the letter. Yeah, all four. And I think Buddy talked, I won't get into all that, but he talked to some of them when they were in Nashville at their county day about it, so. You just never know what they're doing down there, I'll be honest with you.
The number four they had it on there is a close watch, anyway.
It needs to be close watch.
Can you send us a copy of that one?
What letter? This? Sure, you got it in your hand right there.
It's right there.
You're talking about, oh, opposition letter.
They don't have a letter.
I'll get Buddy or Nee, I'll get Nee to write the letter up, yeah, we'll get it to everybody before it goes up. No, you don't do nothing. Is she still here? I mean, is she still gone?
Yeah.
Well, write us up a letter. I'll send it to you.
It's not that we oppose, we strongly oppose.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. There was no money involved, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next up is Tracy Blair. Tracy?
Is anybody besides me gonna mention that the more important of the Blairs is here tonight?
Yes.
Mr. Blair's on the wall now. In my point of view, he says he's been here, I've never seen him here. I don't know if he's coming to tell her to stay at work.
Yes, that's what he said.
Is that what it is?
He'll come to take her away.
He's got airline tickets in his pocket.
Oh, man.
I was about to say, that's probably missing him, if that's why he's here. Mayor Bradshaw, sir, Chairman Cohen, and all members of the County Commission, thank you for allowing me to address you this evening, first of all. It is quite an honor to do so, the last time as your Director of Accounts and Budgets, while you are assembled in legislative session. Most of you know that I grew up in Kentucky. I was born and raised there. I'm a coal miner's daughter, I'm a coal miner's granddaughter.
Woo-hoo!
So hard work is part of my heritage. My parents instilled a legacy in my siblings and me that is probably the most valuable thing they had, and that was a good work ethic, integrity, honesty, and it was solidly based on scriptural principles. And that's the treasure that I brought with me when I came to Loudoun County forty-four and a half years ago, when I married my good-looking husband over there, Mark Blair. Now, Mark is a native of Loudoun County, he grew up right here in Loudoun. He was raised by his grandparents, and they are, to this day, very well-respected and recognized as hard-working, honest people, and they instilled those values in my husband. And together, we did the same for our two sons. And, of course, they're now adults, and they're carrying on in like men. Now, you may be wondering, why on earth would Tracy do an introduction on her last meeting with County Commission and give her family history? What does that have to do with being the Budget Director? And my response to that is absolutely everything. Let me give you a few reasons why I say that. When I became Budget Director, there were longtime Commissioners and County officials who were born and raised here. They were very loyal to the citizens of the community and protective of the values that defined Loudoun County, and understandably so. But I was an outsider, and they put the finances of the county that they loved in my hands. And even to this day, it's very humbling when I think about it, but I believe that the values that were instilling me by my parents contributed to earning their trust and respect, because that was something that had to be earned. It really has been an honor to work with so many good people in the county. Four different county mayors, George Miller, Doyle Hart, Estelle Heron, Buddy Bradshaw. I've worked with six different legislative bodies consisting of more than 25 individual County Commissioners, too many officials and department heads and employees to name. Many of them have retired or moved on, and sadly, some have passed away. But I will always, always be grateful for the opportunity to serve in this capacity and for the trust that you placed in me as the Budget Director. Another area that hard work has paid off is with the finances in Loudoun County. Something historic for the county happened in 2009. That was the first time Loudoun County ever received a completely clean audit, and that was exciting. It felt like that hard work had paid off. But it's special to me for another reason, because at that time, I could provide a response to a challenge that was presented to me by one of the County Commissioners. You see, within the first few months, two or three months after I was appointed as Budget Director, Commissioner Shaver had an item on the workshop agenda. He gave a detailed history of procedures, and he gave examples, he talked for a long time, and I didn't know where he was going.
No.
Until he picked up this envelope that I have kept. He picked up this envelope, he walked over and gave it to me. It was wadawal people. He explained that he had copied ten years of audit findings in this envelope from 1994 to 2004. Gave it to me, he told me, read it. And then he said, Ms. Blair, we expect these to go away. Well, I was embarrassed, I was a little bit scared, but Commissioner Shaver didn't know that my Kentucky treasure, my heritage, oiling had already kicked in, and I had already set that as a challenge that I had set for myself. So the 2009 clean audit, it really did feel like an accomplishment. And since then, we've had five more, and you've heard a lot about that, five consecutive clean audits. So after this presentation, I would like to present Commissioner Shaver with a copy of these for each year. This is what we received from a comptroller's office, and I would like to give Commissioner Shaver a copy of the certificates of clean audits from 2009, 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021, and I'll give this to Commissioner Shaver after the meeting. You know, five in a row, it's almost unheard of. It is truly an accomplishment, and the combined effort of all officials and department heads and employees working together. And the leadership of Mayor Bradshaw in this regard cannot be emphasized enough. This was a priority for Mayor Bradshaw, and it became a priority for all county departments. So, sir, thank you so much for your leadership, for the support that you've given me personally, and the support that you've given to the Accounting Department. And the staff of the Accounting Department has been amazing. They work long hours under great pressure. Their role in the overall accuracy of the financials is so important, and I want to thank them for their support and their willingness to go the extra mile. Now, we're all very proud of the clean audit years, but I want to talk just a minute about the years that we didn't get a clean audit. You know, sometimes we got maybe one finding, maybe two findings, but it's comparable to a touchdown, you know, 99 yards don't count, right? Right? Commissioner Shaver, right?
Amen.
It may have been tough to get those 99 yards, and obviously, a lot of things would've been done right, but it's still short of a touchdown. And that's the way it is with audits. So I'm really proud of the hard work that went into the years that there were for a few findings, because often, those years laid groundwork for the years that we had no findings. And that's why I want to leave something for Erin. You have copies of those certificates hanging in your office, so you don't need those, but I would like to give you this envelope. And I encourage you to read them. When I read them, it made it real to me, it made such an impact on me. But I've added something to this envelope. I made copies of the audit findings that the county received in the years since 2004 for those years that we didn't receive a clean audit. And if, if there are years that you don't get a clean audit, learn from it, make improvements, and watch the results, because the hard work will pay off. Something else that a lot of work was done on is the fund balance. When I became Budget Director on January 1st, 2005, the most recent available audit was dated June 30, 2004. And at that time, the total fund balance in the County General Fund was $1 million. Well, I'm happy to leave a June 30, 2022 audited County General Fund balance of $12.7 million. And of course, many factors have affected the fund balance during the past 18 years. We've had favorable economic conditions as well as unfavorable economic conditions, changes in property tax, redistribution of revenues, but one of the foremost contributing factors is County Commission's determination to manage the fund balance, as recommended by the Budget Committee. So Erin, don't forget those words, manage the fund balance. When you say it, the Budget Committee, they love to hear it. They roll their eyes, they laugh, but it works. So financially, the county is in good shape, and you have placed the finances in the hands of someone whom you can trust to work hard, and not only to keep it that way, but to continue to make improvements. All of this is just a testimony to the fact that none of us can accomplish very much alone. It's truly a combined cooperative effort of everyone working hard together. I've had the privilege to work with many good people in Loudoun County. I've learned a lot from all of you, from all of them, and I hope I've been able to share something as well. I really can't find the words to express my gratitude to the mayors, Commissioners, officials, employees, as well as others in organizations that provide assistance, like C-TAS, and to those who provide professional services to the county. It has truly been a pleasure. Now, I can't leave out my family, my husband especially, and my sons. I do hope that I provided an example to our boys, similar to the one that my parents provided for me, and Mark's grandparents provided for him. And my husband is a hard worker himself, so he understood the responsibility associated with this position. But the sacrifices that he made during my tenure as Budget Director are just too numerous to name. His patience has been a hidden, unknown asset to Loudoun County. He was my biggest cheerleader when things were going well, and my strongest support when things were difficult. So, Mark, thank you very much. So these are just a few areas that I see the wisdom of what my parents taught me. There are others, and if they were here and if they could review my tenure as Budget Director, I think they would be pleased, and that in itself is fulfilling to me. So in conclusion, eighteen years and three months ago, Loudoun County Commission assembled in legislative session on December 6, 2004, and at that meeting, my appointment as the Director of the Accounts and Budgets was approved. That evening, I promised County Commission that I would work diligently with integrity and honesty. It is now my sincere desire that Mayor Bradshaw and this legislative body accept my notification of intent to retire with the consensus that my promise was fulfilled. Thank you very much.
Tracy, well done. You are more than supportive of Congress.
You could always throw in your public speaking, you did a great job, I tell you what.
Yeah, thanks so much, Ray.
Well, Tracy, when the County Commission hired you, that's probably the most outstanding act this august body has done in its history.
What's your official last date?
31st.
31st, so you'll be here the 31st?
I assume this is our last check, you're gonna write us for the.
This is your last check.
You're going out, go out with a bang, right? Folks, I was here the day the woman was hired. She was just working in the finance department, just as another person willing to do it. It was a good pick we made, I'll tell you right now. Wow.
Erin? And Zach, you can mark her 10:42 at the end of the month, and I'll score her home.
One of the things that we get with new finance officers and such across the state and various departments that are struggling, I guess Polk County might've been the last one to come up. They send them to Loudoun County to learn how Loudoun County does. And I'll be perfectly honest, how Loudoun County does it is how Tracy Blair wants it done. The jokes about the mayor, the vice mayor, and so forth, but there's no doubt about it, the mayor listens to that lady right there.
And she has such.
Thank you for letting us have a walk in many hours. Tracy, thank you for your service, and there's no doubt about it, ladies and gentlemen, Tracy Blair's the gold standard, no doubt about it.
She mentioned one thing other than hard work, and that's integrity. And she definitely displayed integrity the whole time that I have ever known her. If Tracy said it, then it was true. You could trust any number that you ever saw on a page that she put there. So I'm gonna miss her, she's such an eloquent lady.
I got her cell phone number if you need it.
Oh, I know, I know.
I know where she is.
She's changing her at the end of the line.
We love that wonderful velvet glove that she wore when we had budget meetings during the budget where, like I said, made things happen, but without much bloodshed.
And I watched her. Sometimes she looked like she wanted to speak, but she just sat there quietly and managed.
It was always, this was her stand, but now, just wanna be sure of what you just said, now I'm gonna let you know if you do that.
Clarification, clarification, you messed up when you got that most intimidating five-foot woman I've ever known. I guarantee you, when she looks up over in glasses, actually, you know, when you're seeing something, you stop, you messed up already.
She did it in a nice way, always a nice way.
Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us. How you done, the way you all worked it out, 'cause she's here 24/7, best I could tell. I don't know, maybe he was living back there with her, I don't know. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. Erin, you wanna take us through the budget?
I'll try.
What an act of solemn.
I get real emotional when stuff comes up about her leaving, so I apologize for that. So, item A is consideration of recommendation to approve some ARCA resolutions in District 1C-A.
Let me ask you a question, do you need these separately, or can we approve them together?
You can approve them together.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve item 1 through 6.
Okay, we got a motion.
I'll second it.
Wait, why not?
Wait a second, Chase.
No, no, we're just doing ours.
That's another one.
Yeah, okay. I'll second that. A1 through 6, we'll do them in groups.
Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner Randolph, seconded by Commissioner James, to use the American Rescue Act money, 1 through 6. Any discussion? There's money involved, call the roll.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yeah.
Cohen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yep.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
Item D is consideration of recommendation to approve resolutions for ARCA funds, the same six, but these are in District 1C-B.
Make a motion, we approve them all.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner James, seconded by Commissioner Randolph, to approve them all together, 1 through 6. Any further discussion? Okay, there's money involved, call a roll.
Quillen?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Letter C is consideration of recommendation to approve an ARCA resolution in District 4, $50,000 to Philadelphia Fire Department.
Make a motion, we approve.
Say it.
We got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield, seconded by Commissioner Shaver, to approve $50,000 to the Philadelphia Fire Department. Any further discussion? Money involved, call a roll.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Somebody's distracting.
No, she said it, it's not bothering her. I think Bill was talking to her when it come up.
I said it.
Okay.
Item D is consideration to approve ARCA resolutions in District 7, $20,000 to TRDA and Teleco Resour Development Agency, $70,000 contribution to Friends and Teleco Village of Laker.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion on your behalf for those.
I'll second it.
Who seconded it? Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Quillen, to approve 20 grand for the TRDA, and 70 to fix the AC at the library. Any further discussion? There's money involved, call a roll.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yep.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
And Satterfield?
Letter E is consideration of recommendation to approve amendments in the.
Somebody said between them two, that's a problem down there. I'm sorry.
County General Fund 101, Special Revenue ARCA Fund 127, Highway Department Fund 131, School Fund 141, 142, and 143. There were worksheets distributed along with Pammy's packet online that I have some available if you want a free copy.
Budget Committee approved all these, didn't they?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we approve them, 1 through 6.
Say it.
We got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield to approve 1 through 6.
No raises in there this time, is it?
No.
Seconded by Commissioner Shaver.
Same motion, same second, though.
Any, any further discussion? There's money involved, call a roll.
Cohen?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yep.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Yes.
Yes.
Letter F is distribution of monthly reports. I distributed to each one of you a summary financial statement for the month of February. I failed to bring the Budget Committee meeting minutes that were approved at the last meeting.
That is demerit.
I'm sorry.
I demerit.
I'm sorry, I apologize. So I will bring you two sets next time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all the names under bond and notaries of lemonade.
Say it.
We got a motion by Commissioner Waller for the bonds and notaries, seconded by Commissioner Shaver.
No.
Oh, hang on. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Say it.
We got a motion by Commissioner Waller, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins to adjourn. All in favor?
Whoa, hang on, Buddy's got something.
The, I passed a resolution at the workshop. Is y'all gonna, is there any interest, because I'm getting calls from all over the state asking Loudoun, it doesn't really impact Loudoun County, all it would do is, it's an impact fees, we've already got the impact fee in place for our AFT, but.